I have six o'clock, call meeting to order. Uh, we are, we have everybody here, Ashley's not logged in yet.
Yeah, and Ashley might not make it. I know she, she has a lot of things going on, so she may not be, be here tonight.
She better do try to, uh, come in and then, uh, we're missing Rick as well. So everybody else board is here. Um. And we have one addition to the agenda. What can I explain that or?
So on, on Monday morning, uh, school exec connect sent me their proposal, uh, to assist the superintendent cert. So that item is now located in the addition to the agenda. Um, it is the third proposal that the board will consider when we get down to item C.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with addition.
I have a motion from Bruce.
A second.
I have a second from Cheryl. Any further comments? If no, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Carry. Uh, nobody here for comment it looks like. We move on to the consent agenda. Um, we have in here the meeting, the management last, uh, three meetings. Um, we have Bill, Cheryl, you have anything in particular you want to discuss?
Um, no, everything was pretty much business as normal. I saw some, uh, coffee shop equipment and it sounds like that's going over really well. Everybody's enjoying it. And the trap team is getting their, um, supplies in, so trap season must be starting. And the pop hacks are still ongoing as far as I can see.
Absolutely. Yep. Every week they go out.
Okay. Wonderful. Those were just things I noted. Everything else is pretty much normal.
Uh, Matt, his personal items.
Uh, yeah, so we have just a couple of things. So, um, I'm gonna start with the Lee Schlepper and Bryce Savage piece. Um, so if you remember because of COVID now, um, baseball for junior high and, um, was in this, in the fall. And now that means football is in the spring. But Lee has a conflict. Lee usually coaches junior high football because football got moved to the spring. He has a conflict with it and can't do that. Um, so he did resign. I, I believe it'll be a one-year resignation. I do believe Lee will be back next year. And then, uh, that meant Bryce Savage, when that, uh, position was posted, Bryce Savage, he's a teacher at the high school. He, uh, was willing to step up and, and help out with that. So that to me is, is a one-year thing. And then I think once football gets back to the fall, baseball gets back to the spring, um, things will, will go back to the way they were. And then there are, um, two retirement notices from paraprofessionals, Dan Gilke and Jeannie Hang as well. Uh, the other thing that's in here, uh, each April, the board approves the career increment payments. Those are per master agreement. Um, and so those are, are also attached as well. We invite recommendation that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion from Bruce.
A second.
There's second from Maggie. Any further discussion? Otherwise, we'll, all favor say aye.
Uh, carry.
Oppose say no. Carry. In case I snap, that's you.
I just have a couple of items. Um, so first of all, Cheryl, I'm glad you brought up the coffee shop. Uh, I, Mr. Orline had stopped in, uh, I think it was one day last week or whatever. And, uh, coffee shop has a couple of weeks now of kind of getting into a groove and stuff. Um, so I believe those students, uh, that are, are really responsible for that are probably going to be coming to the May, um, work session. Just to talk with the board about kind of what they're doing, what they're trying to accomplish and how's it going and, and all of that stuff. So you're gonna hear directly from them, um, in, at the next meeting. Uh, the other thing, over the last week or so, they're starting to become some clarity with the last two, um, stimulus packages, the S R funds, S R two and S R three. So we have our timeline right here. S R two would have been approved at the federal level in December. S R three would have been approved at the federal level in early February. Um, so those are the, the two stimulus packages we're talking about. Um, Minnesota has now released their, um, financial runs for those. Um, and, and so we'll start working through how those funds are gonna be allocated and, and what that's, that's going to look like. Um, a large portion of our stimulus funds, uh, my recommendation would be for the board to put those towards the indoor air quality project at the elementary school. Um, we have some other needs that absolutely will need to be addressed, but that will be a, a large, um, portion of those stimulus dollars. Uh, the other thing is then obviously we are just about at the beginning of May and, um, it'll be crazy how quick, uh, May will go as the, the school year, um, and it comes to a conclusion and stuff. Mr. Orline continues to work on a commencement plan. I know that he was actually, uh, going to meet with a few parents of seniors. Uh, I can't remember if it's this week or next week.
Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night. There we go. It is this week. Um, so he was gonna, uh, meet with a small group of parents. He just wanted to get some, run some ideas past them and just kind of see what their impressions were of it. Um. I really think we're, you know, obviously we're committed to commencement and, um, regardless of, of what the restrictions are, we will have commencement, uh, exactly what it's gonna look like, I think is still in the works. But I know Mr. Orline's really hopeful that we can, um, do something out at the baseball stadium and be able to allow, uh, more people than, um, than what, what we would be stuck to if we were doing that. So, um, those details should emerge here, I think in the next week or so, and then as soon as we have a commencement plan, know that, that I'll get that to you. Um, one conversation I just want the board to be aware of that he, uh, Mr. Orline, I did have about this, um. Our goal is to get as many commencement tickets into the hands of seniors. So as a result, Mr. Orline is going to be kind of restreamlining how and, uh, what commencement looks like. What that may mean is it may impact how many board members we have, um, up by the stage for diploma handout and stuff like that. Um, you know, so just know that there are some things that are fluid with that. And so don't be surprised if here in a week or so, uh, David is sending an email out trying to explain this and it's probably gonna look, yep, for, overarching goal is how do we get students as many tickets so they can bring as many family members on? That's, that's what the goal is and we can kind of see how, how that evolves. Okay? Questions at all?
What, what kind of numbers are we talking about for commencement? Did we go to the?
Well, the baseball stadium is, is more obviously than, than what he's really trying to, he's trying to plan for worst-case scenario. And so he's focusing a lot of time right now on if weather doesn't cooperate and we have to move this inside. How many tickets can I give kids and still have us be in compliance? And so, uh, his goal obviously is four tickets a senior. He would like to even maybe up that if he could. Um, knowing that not every senior needs to use all four tickets, but there might be a senior who wants to use five tickets. And so, be a little bit fluid with, with something like that. So that's really where he's, right now he's concentrating on worst-case scenario, plan B. I think when you talk about doing something at the stadium, then we're, we have a lot more flexibility. There's a lot of space for people to spread out and, and do some things differently, um, with that.
I think when you're talking about us not going for the students, I'm out in a minute. Students first. So even if we just pick one of us to be the representative board, I am a hundred percent on page. I would not want to take the place of any parent or a grandparent or whatever they want to do with, with their tickets.
And I appreciate you saying that, Bruce. Um, I, I probably should have checked with everybody. But I told, I told David that that really needs to be our priority. We need to first figure out how we can get as many tickets in the hands of students. And if that means that, you know, uh, there's a lesser role for, for some adults at school, the adults just need to be okay with it.
And I could potentially act as parent and for our seniors, I represent both.
Yeah. So just know that we're getting close to finalizing. Don't be surprised if you get an email from Mr. Orline here in the next week or so. Uh, kind of detailing what, what he'd be looking for and asking for. Um, and it might look different than, than what it has in the.
Hmm, makes sense to me. Students and kids first, you guys, as far as whoever did it. But it's a lifetime memory for them and there is probably nobody in the whole senior class is ever gonna remember who's on the school board anyway.
I will. No, I went first.
Good. That's what I got for you. Any other questions?
One on that Senate, uh, bill.
Yeah.
When I was reading about some of those, a lot of those were supposed to be used in air quality. Is that one we're talking about?
Yeah, so the, the, uh, so the, both of, all of the federal stimulus fa- funds go by the acronym of S R. So S R one was the first one, S R two and S R three. S R one was not allowed to be used towards, uh, capital projects.
Okay.
S R two and three were, have increased the, the, um, the requirements for what you can spend that money on. And now capital projects that directly impact air quality are absolutely in S R two and S R three. There's an application process that we have to go through with M D E. M D E will review it. And it just make sure it meets certain criteria, but S R two and S R three are open to those indoor air quality pieces, whereas S R one was not.
Good.
All right, with that, uh, committee and organizational reports. We have, permanent information from committee reports. Are there any committee?
I don't think we have anything.
No, the calendars look kind of bare.
Yes.
Something, so. All right, we'll go on to old business, uh, strategic plan.
All right, so, um, I will put this up here too. So, um, talking about kind of a, a monthly check-in with strategic plan and.
I'm gonna jip for a second. What are we gonna hear from you?
I can talk.
And I thought you didn't follow.
Sorry, Dave.
Um, just that there's, we're planning for prom. Prom's coming up fast. Um, um, the N H S students are going to the manor and doing stuff at the, for walking around the manor and wash and sort for prom. There's not a whole lot of, um, good stuff.
Are people, are the students excited for prom or?
Yeah, I think they're, I'm excited. Um, I think this is something to do with the school and get all, and one last thing before graduation. Excited for graduation too, but we actually get to have it this year, like prom and I think something like the juniors are getting, there's a lot more juniors this year too, so that are like, yeah, it'll be a good turnout.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce.
Gosh, should we move on to strategic?
Now we move to strategic plan.
Okay, so, uh, we talked a little bit about this. Um, this is the, the document that, um, I would suggest that, that we start to use on a monthly basis just to touch base with where things are at. Um, you'll see this document is really divided into three areas. You've got ideas or items that are in exploration. This is going to get really lengthy. There are things on here right now that, um, most of these, since we're at the beginning of this, most of these that are, we're starting with, they will flow across and go from exploration to planning to implementation. But as things involve, evolve, there are gonna be things where we explore something and we figure out it doesn't fit, it doesn't work, it's not, it's got issues, roadblocks, and it just kind of gets left behind. There's absolutely nothing wrong with that. That is a natural part of, um, trying to, um, you know, continue to, to, uh, better ourselves as a district and, and as a school system. Um, so as you can look at some of this, you, I'm gonna start with the green where things that we're already in implementation mode. Um, seven mindsets is, is going. There's, uh, uh, work being done on that, that's social emotional learning, uh, component that is in the process of being embedded, um, throughout the district. Uh, school business partnerships, um, this year cold spring was a new offering. It will be offered again next year. It's a series of manufacturing and engineering courses for juniors and seniors. Um, you can also see that items in planning, we're also trying to expand those school and business partnerships and we think our next place to really explore that is in the automotive repair sector. And so there's been a couple of conversations. We've actually had some people out to take a look at the new facility to let them know kind of what we're planning on doing with the, our, our automotive program. And so I think that one's probably gonna move over to implementation here in a, in a short while as well. Shared services is being implemented and then, uh, some digital curriculum writing pieces. Uh, we had our first cohort go last summer. Um, we'll have another cohort possibly this summer as well. When you look at what's kind of in the planning stage, there's a whole host of, of things that are going on here. Uh, P B I S is, uh, strong in our elementary school. It's something that we need to expand system-wide, so that would be, that, that criteria. Um, there's a couple of biggies in here. I think the indoor air quality project, I put it in the planning column just because the intent, um, is to actually pick up where we left off uh, in August of twenty nineteen prior to the, the project referendum. Um, Site Logic is actually working on picking up where we left off to double-check as far as the scope of that project, where it's coming in. And I'm thinking we will have a, uh, indoor air quality project meeting soon, uh, with Site Logic to touch base with where that's at. Operating referendum updating, um, everybody in the room knows that our operating referendum is set to expire in a year. And so that is a continuing piece that the, the district needs to keep planning for. Um, we've also had some shared services components that were in the planning stage of our network administration. Next year we are gonna be sharing that with, uh, B B E. That stuff will come formalized and be formalized in May, um, as we move forward with finalizing a budget. The district advisory committee is in planning that we're, we're gonna kick that off, um, yet this spring as well. Also, um, our C T E advisory group, Pains Valory Community Foundation, they're gonna assist us with the facility open house. Um, so that's gonna continue to be on that planning piece. And then we have two, um, curricular components as far as literacy development. Um, letters professional development and a literacy bootcamp that is, um, in the, in the works for August. Um, so those are, are things that would be, be kicking off as well. So the intent with this is on a monthly basis, uh, the board is just going to take, usually it's anywhere from, you know, five to 10 minutes and just check in with where things are at and, and, um, anytime there's movement, whether, uh, something goes from the red column to the yellow column, I would move those and then I would highlight those for the board, so you will be able to pick up on which one they're moving. Um, there may be months where things stay the same. That's fine. Nothing wrong with that. And then you may also come across, uh, some items that just get the strike through, put through. And if the strike throughs put through and that's probably something, that was in the exploration column that really never, um, after doing the exploration, it really wasn't something that had a viable path forward. Okay? Questions on this, at the bottom of this, uh, are the three goals, um, that, uh, just so we keep those front and center for us. Um, but the intent would be every month, the board is going to have this. Um, if you go up to the, the, uh, first, um, row, you can actually go and just pull up the actual strategic plan. Now, the strategic plan is gonna be more detailed, especially when it goes to those action items. So by all means, board members, as we're going through this, in six months from now, you can go and pull up, well, you know, there were these five items that we were talking about doing for communication. I, I'm not seeing the communication items come up on here yet. When, when are we gonna get going on, on those types of things? So, um, just know that this should be kind of a one-stop document, um, that the board's gonna revisit on a monthly basis.
But, so question I have, um, you may have answered it. So when things elevate to fall into the spreadsheet, they are taken from the plan or, or are there new? Does that make sense? Like I was, you know, when you look at, um, the goal number two, there's not a lot in implementation. There's a few things, you know, in planning and exploration, but we actually are doing a lot. And that's where it's like, so how does that fall in? I mean, there is a lot of communication. Does that just kind of show there needs to be comprehensive plan?
Yeah, and so, so this is, is my first run at this. This document can actually go to our admin team tomorrow. So I would think tomorrow you're gonna have some things added to it. Um, but the other thing is, I just don't also want to lock us into the only thing we can be working on is what's in the plan, because the plan has to be fluid. And so it's okay that, you know what, there may be a promising avenue to pursue and it fits into a goal, but it wasn't one of the, the, you know, short-term benchmarks when we, when we developed this. That's still okay for that stuff to show up on.
Okay. I didn't know if it had to be solely what was in the plan or if we're gonna keep.
Nope. I, I think it's okay to have it, have it stay fluid and, you know, the, the plan itself is the overall kind of idea and guide, but there's nothing written in stone in that plan that says this is the only way.
I like this sheet right here. It's, you've got a quick summary sheet. It brings us up to date. If we were dealing with that plan and going through that every time, it will end up on a shelf and we're just, it's all over with. Topics like this, we can look up other information, we can ask questions off of it. Uh, of all that I've seen in plans, that's the nicest thing. Quick summary for all of us. We know what we're going on. We kind of have the.
The direction. I like it. And it's a viewpoint for us as well as the administration, as well as staff and anybody else that needs to see it. It's a, it's a saving, quick viewpoint of what are we doing and where are we going and why, you know, and.
And Maggie, to your point and, and to all board members, I would hope moving forward that if you see a trend where, you know, there's a lot of work being done of goals one and three, but there's not so much being done of goal two.
Right.
This is then the forum to talk about, okay, how can we refocus? Make sure that we are also staying connected to that communication goal. And so I think this gives people an easy snapshot to say, you know what, yeah, we've, we've got some distribution. We've obviously implemented far more on our growth goal than our communication goal. But now this is a point where you can start checking in.
Not to necessarily add to it, but, you know, as the future grows, the, things will move from in, from implementation to completed.
Correct.
So is there that possibility to have, uh, another tab of completed, you know, something? So again, so we could look back and say, there's not a lot of stuff going on in communication right now, but if you look back, we completed all these adventures or, or something like that, because things won't stay in application forever. So we can remind ourselves that, you know, well, we didn't do something now, but we did a lot or we did some.
Right. And if it's completed, we still might be evaluating that program.
The program.
And maybe that's the fourth column on here is evaluate. That, that's where it just becomes part of the annual.
Your end.
Yep.
So I just have one, something specific since it's a goal up there, but we talked about the, the open house. It said there's a group that's gonna be working on that. I just want to really encourage, that's gotta be a really big deal. I mean, not just a one afternoon thing. We're gonna say, well, it's open, but I, this is something impressive. We gotta get it out there. And that goes all the way to St. Cloud and Wilmer and.
So it's not just Painsville, but.
It's our chance to really blow our horn. So whatever they plan, I, I hope they make a really big. Of course, depending upon COVID.
And I'll be, yeah, and that's been the, the limiting factor up to this point. I mean, I think ideally, if we could have done this the way we wanted to, we would have done an open house for the C T E space.
Right.
And then when the whole project is done, we would have had a second open house. And truly the only reason that that hasn't happened is because of COVID. So, but I agree, Rick, you're, you're spot on. It, it is gonna be a big event and it needs to be a community-wide, uh, initiative. It can't just be where it's, I mean, school families.
Right.
Needs to be broader and it needs to be larger.
With some other activities maybe or something else going on.
Yep.
And then I have another question on strategic plan. So kind of who's watching, it's the admin team that is looking at this and you're the ones that are filling it in and trying things together.
And that doesn't mean that the admin team is, is responsible for all the action on there.
Right.
But the admin team is the one, are the people that are gonna be held accountable to the, the, um, plan being implemented.
Has this been helpful to them?
The red, yellow, green, they're gonna take a first look at it tomorrow. Um, so it will be. You know, and I've used it in, in previous districts and to me it's, it's a good visual to be able to make really just some, some real overview observations and I find it helpful to keep us moving in the right direction.
I'm grateful that you're transitioned to have this. I mean, this is, this is why we do planning.
Okay, so every business meeting from here forward, the board should plan on spending about five to 10 minutes just reviewing kind of if there's been any movement or any updates on specific items. Okay?
All right, with that, we'll move on to new business class of twenty twenty-one action. Matt?
So each year the board needs to approve diplomas. Um, the final, uh, call on the issuing diplomas is administrative approval. So Mr. Orline would ultimately be the one who would be determining, uh, that all students met all state and local criteria. But this is our list that we are anticipating will be receiving the diploma. So I'd ask the board to approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve diplomas for the class of twenty twenty-one.
A second.
I have a motion from Bruce, the second from Rick. Is there any further discussion?
I would just, I would like to congratulate the class. I, I mean, personally, I think this is why we're on the board. You know, this is the outcome of the work of from preschool on up and this always, this is significant. Last year, this was very, it's emotional thinking. These are students and that's pretty cool. This was, I don't know, it's just really cool to me. So congratulations. A big deal.
With that, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose say no. Carry. He proposed unrequested leave of absence. Matt?
Uh, we do have one, um, teacher that, uh, through budget reduction process, we are, um, requesting be placed on, on requested leave of absence. Um, Amy Jo Gabey is that, that teacher. Uh, we would be placing her on U L A for point five F T E. Um, just so everyone in the room is aware of how this works. Unrequested leave of absence. Um, the first step in here would be issue this letter proposing, you're actually not placing her on unrequested leave of absence tonight. You are notifying her of this proposal. She then has some due process rights that immediately kick in once, um, that notification is made. And then at the next business meeting is when the board would actually act on a, um, on requested leave of absence request or notification. So it would be my recommendation to, um, approve this. The, this does, um, by statute, uh, Ms. Gabey would have, uh, rights to reinstatement for five years as long as she, uh, provides written notice to the district that she is interested in being reinstated. What that means then is the district would need to evaluate whenever they are, um, uh, increasing their teacher F T E or adding positions. They would need to evaluate Ms. Gabey's credentials to see if she is licensed or, um, qualified for any additional or new positions in the district. If she is, then she would be eligible for reinstatement and to be able to fill that position. Okay? Questions on this?
So we're looking for a motion, uh, to adopt the resolution as stated. Do we need to read it all out or?
Um, you certainly can. I can give you the summary if you would like.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
So basically the board is gonna resolve that you're gonna propose Amy Jo Gabey, um, who's a continuing contract teacher, be placed on unrequested leave of absence for point five F T E of her contract at the end of the twenty twenty-one school year. The reason the district is, uh, making this, uh, recommendation is because of lack of pupils and financial limitations. And, um, we will then notify, uh, Mrs. Gabey and as I said, there are some immediate due process rights that then get kicked in that she can exercise if she, um, chooses.
And I'll make that motion.
Is it a roll call vote or?
It will be a roll call. We will need somebody to second it, but it will be a roll call vote.
Yep. Wait for a second.
I'll second it.
Second from Bruce. And with that, we'll do a roll call vote.
Uh, Miranda, I'll go through the roll call. Uh, Anderson, Anderson is absent. Uh, Hope?
Aye.
Kane?
Aye.
Pearson?
Aye.
Butch?
Aye.
Vanderpoel?
Aye.
Feldkamp?
Aye.
Whereupon said, resolution is declared duly passed and adopted on April twenty seventh.
Twenty seven. Thank you.
Twenty twenty-one. I will check that.
One quick question.
Yep.
If in the fall, our numbers did jump drastically, would this be vacated?
Uh, if there is a position that needs to be added that, um, she is licensed for, yes, you will. That, that reinstatement, um, it starts immediately. There's no, there's no time period or anything associated with it. As soon as the board actually goes through with placing someone on ULA, the minute that we start to add a position, we always have to evaluate anybody who's on the ULA list to see if they're qualified and licensed for a position. If they are, they are automatically, um, offered that position.
Thank you.
Uh, item C superintendent search consultant. We have the three proposals.
Yep. So there are three proposals that are in the, the packet here. I'll, I'll just give a quick overview of each of them and then as a board, you can discuss the direction you would like to do, to, to move. Uh, so the first proposal that is on there, these are in no particular order, is Big River Group, um, proposal. Big River Group is Bruce Miles. His proposal has, uh, is broken down into multiple areas or sections of the search. Ultimately, the board needs to decide what, um, items of that menu they want, would want Bruce to do and complete, um, as the consultant. And if there are items that are particular that the district would take, then that's going to direct the impact costs. If the board would take the proposal as a full comprehensive proposal, as it's written with all of the options, the costs associated with the, um, Big River Group proposal is $11,650. MSBA, the School Board Association is the second proposal. MSBA obviously is the, um, professional organization that all school boards, I think in the state of Minnesota are very uh, familiar with and connected to. Uh, their proposal is, uh, as it's written, is $7,400 is their base, um, proposal. They do have some, um, open costs that they don't actually provide estimates for. Um, so there would potentially be some additional costs. When I look at it and what they're talking about, the core of their services are included in that 7,400. So I don't want board members to think that that 7,400 could actually turn into, you know, 15,000 or something. I don't see it being that much, but I do believe there would be some additional cost beyond the $7,400 if MSBA were the direction the group wants to move. Uh, the third, um, proposal is from School Exec Connect. School Exec Connect, uh, is probably the, the one, um, organization on here that really focuses, heavily on, uh, school and super, school superintendent searches. Uh, they are really nationwide. Um, they have a heavy presence in the upper Midwest, but they're, they're all over, uh, the country. Their full proposal is the, it's, it's a $10,000 proposal and then they build in a $1,500, um, other expenses, but they cap it at that. Um, so realistically, the maximum exposure that the district would have if you went to School Exec Connect could be 11,500. So discussion. If you have questions, I can certainly try to answer them, but I think, uh, the board just needs to talk a little bit about what direction you think to go.
Well, I'll just mention that I talked to, well, I did talk to, I talked to the board chair from Royalton. They just finished their search with MSBA. Uh, they were very well pleased. They actually have three new board members as they started this process. So they actually worked it into a group building activity as well. Um, then I did talk to the fellow who worked with them, Lee Warnie or Warren, and just got some feedback from him. It's, it's different than the last one we went through and I, and I sometimes you fall in love with the way it's been done and then you have to kind of reimagine that maybe it doesn't have to be that way. Um, so there were some differences, very major differences from how we did it last time. And they had reasons for that. And, um, I, you know, I feel very comfortable with them so far, but then I haven't talked to the others, so.
Rick, can you share a little bit more what those differences were? And that was, I talked to a board member from Dasko Kato and they went with SEC. And he, her concern with the MSBA was he didn't feel that they were as inclusive. And is that part of it? They, they didn't, they don't recommend the community groups and all the different.
Yes, yes. Last time we had the community group, the staff group, the school board. And the reason that they don't recommend that is the fear that a community group might yield some ownership. When ultimately they have the ownership, it's our ownership. We have to make the decision. When we did that last time, we had the groups all meet that one night, we talked and talked and talked, and then they had to shut up. And the board had to make a decision. And the fear would be that they might, it might cause some problems if people have really, in the staff group, maybe feel strongly about this candidate on board just now, we don't want them. So that's their reasoning. They, they just, uh, concerned that, that you might run as much. The other one was, and I didn't quite understand this, but he said, we show you everything. Uh, he meant that when they get the first batch of people, they show us everything and we, they indicated the other groups don't. They just show you what they're talking. I don't know, but those are two things.
I understand the concern of the community group and that focus, but on the flip side, being part of the community group, I never felt, and maybe just myself, but I never felt like I was ever in control of the situation. I was there to help guide, and I think it was very well communicated to us that this is our purpose on the community group. We are here to ask questions and develop our own concept. And, and that concept then would be without our voices brought to the board, put on a big sheet of paper and said, you know, it, it was pretty well stated out how that process was going to work for us. I guess it never went into that.
I should say that it's not that they don't use a community group. They do.
Okay.
Okay.
But they don't interview, but they watch the interviews on tape or whatever. And then they have two questions they're asked and they answer those two questions. And that's their feed into it. So there is a community group.
There's just not, okay. And they do the surveys and they do.
All the preliminary building up, you gotta build the, go to the rest of the, what do you want.
I visited with two superintendents, one retired, one current, um, about Big River and they, they like Bruce. Bruce does fantastic work. Uh, they've been impressed with him. Um, so that was their recommendation. They, they quite enjoy Bruce. And they had said, and I heard this somewhere, that MSBA, I think it had a rough time of starting out uh, with schools. And you know, this is new for them too. They're new to the game, whereas Bruce has been, how long has Bruce been doing this? And so I think, I think experience is important, um, and that's what they stressed to me. MSBA probably does a great job, but experience wise, Bruce has been doing this for quite a long time and he's had some pretty fantastic results. And he knows this area really well, being, you know, the St. Cloud area. And I think that could be really beneficial to us, you know? So that's, that's the takeaway that I got for these two.
Today I was leaning pretty heavy to Bruce Miles, but what sticks in my mind is Exec Connect had some guarantees at the end and I were fairly close, but they had a guarantee if the superintendent didn't stay more than two years. They had some of the other stuff. That really why I didn't see in the others, um, that they're different. That doesn't surprise me a bit. We had the same firm do the first one I was in on. And then the second one, when we hired Matt, both of those two were a lot different. They, they weren't really the same. We incorporated the same individuals, but how it was handled was different. I would expect it to probably be different than maybe what you used to. When I look at the, the School Board Association group, they had a lot of interesting stuff there, more tuned to COVID-style maybe interviews. Parts of their red just looked like that was maybe a more up to date as far as that concerned. But for me right now, I, I've been thinking about it all day and I've been reading these things over. I'd have to lean to, um, that exact connect.
You know, and I, I'm kind of, you know, I'm kind of leaning that same way, I guess. For some, a lot of the same reasons. I think you are, my biggest concern with Exec Connect is how connected are they to rural school districts as compared to me? They, Recor was a cold school district they did, they did work with and you know, that's a, a nice small, you know, it's a nice rural district as well, but you know, that's my only concern with Exec Connect. Dasko Kato, yep, that's right. That was the other one.
My question would be the timeline. Um, this, this Lee did tell me that what MSB was proposing was a speeded up timeline for us. Um, and I did indicate to him, I was the concern is that, you know, do we have enough time? He said, well, it's going to be tough. So there's these other groups. I don't know what their timeline is. Is, is this the normal timeline or are they going to speed up something for us?
I, I think all of them are going to be working on a condensed timeline. And I think the other thing that's important too, and the one thing that all of these are on the same level playing field is all of them are going to offer the ability for the board to screen candidates and then make a decision if they want to go through with the interview hiring process or if they want to suspend and go the interim route. All of them would, would be back on board in January.
Right, sure.
And if there isn't going to have to worry about another contract or anything like that, it's all going to be part of these agreements.
That's something I know you've mentioned and they, they said, but I don't, I don't recall seeing that in any of the contracts either necessarily. So I think as a collective group, it'd be something we'd want to definitely discuss the, that that's spelled out in the contract. That, you know, everybody's saying, yeah, by June we'll hire the superintendent, but I don't see, or, you know, we do this and there's no.
Do we need any help with the search for an interim as well if that?
Right.
Or are we on our own for that?
So my thing is, you know, it's such a quick timeline until, you know, what, June 30th? And I feel almost, and maybe we find somebody by then, but I almost feel it's becoming more and more likely that we may have to have an interim. And that's a real concern that I have. Um, I, I, I mean, you know, these, what is a typical time for a superintendent? Usually it takes quite a significant amount of time and sure you can condense it enough, but in that sort of time, it almost, it, it don't, I don't know if it's realistic thing, oh, we don't need interim, but I'm wondering if we really need to significantly plan for the likelihood of needing interim superintendent to get us by until we can, you know, get all the candidates we want or whatever, because I don't know if rushing would necessarily do us any good, you know? Cause that could stop our candidate flow. We could, you know, get somebody later on. That would be really fantastic for the district instead of rushing it, you know? I just, just think we might need to think of the possibility of needing an interim.
I think that'll show up, um, as we go through the process. I actually was surprised that they all came back pretty much with us having a, a contract by, um, July 1st. That surprised me. I figured if it was going to be an issue, somebody would come back and say, hit home. You just can't do it in that amount of time. So it's obviously not the first rodeo for any of them. Even the School Board Association, they came back with very specific timelines. Bruce Miles was a, a little bit different with the TBA to be announced. And then, but it sounded like it would all work there. But with the Exec Connect, they're going to kind of, it appears they just hang with us. And then we have some, some guarantees that aren't a bad deal out there. Um, and I liked that actually. And, but again, I, I really struggled with it. I was kind of, I'm okay with the School Board Association, but I also, when, when somebody says to me, I'm going to see familiar faces. I'm not sure the faces I saw, I wanted to help us. I mean, going to the School Board Association forever.
Tell us how you really feel, Bruce.
I do want longevity and experience for the search firm. And MSBA, they're a great organization, but they're newer to it. And I look at this position as not just critical for our school district, it's critical to our community. I mean, this is a big enough role that I want the experts at the table, like I want somebody who has, I'm not saying that they don't have the connections, but we can't just, we can't already put bias on that only somebody in this area would take this position. We're doing a lot of great things. We could recruit from all the state. We, I mean, the, I don't want to be limited to just thinking that because we're a small district, we're only going to attract a certain type of candidate. So I do want, that was appealing to me is that they have worked with a bunch of different types of districts because we probably are going to box ourselves in, whereas hopefully they push us outside that zone a little bit.
And that's a great opposition to what I, what I mentioned, which is a very good valid point. Seeing we're a rural, rural school district and wanting to go with somebody who's comfortable hiring from rural school districts does, you know, narrow our candidate pool down all of a sudden instead of, you know, somebody who, who may not be necessarily looking through here with, with the different firms, so.
So it could be, and I want somebody who's really going to help, you know, facilitate the process and do some training, because not everybody, maybe everybody in here does hire all the time, I don't know. But to make sure that we are looking through it with a lens of diversity, equity, inclusion, that we're not biased in our questions, that we're not making assumptions, like they're not going to take the job because, you know, they were at this district, like really helping us understand, here's how we need to approach it based to the matrix, based to the required qualifications and preferred qualifications. And I think you, I mean, I really, really want, I guess I really want an expert at the table. Again, not saying MSBA is not, but the other two.
Would, would MSBA be more likely to focus on Minnesota? Are these other groups, that's, my question was, are the other groups, are they?
More nation.
More nation oriented, um.
Right. So I don't know. I felt much more comfortable with the other two. And just they, they seemed more inclusive of their approach. And to me, it is really important that we do have training involvement. And I think you can set that boundary up and say, you're not hiring this candidate. But we've been so transparent as a district, uh, like why would we now suddenly be like?
Yeah.
We don't.
Closing you out, so.
And not saying that they, they would, but I think it's critical that we have lots of input, um, at the table and that we're getting feedback. So that, that's kind of like where my, I guess where my deal is. Um, but those two, it's hard to look on paper. Cause it's not like, it wasn't just listed out pros and cons of both. But as long as we, if the search fails and that they will work with us, you know, through that, that's, I don't want to go into it. I, I have those concerns too, will we find somebody, but I think we need to move forward. I mean, the world's different now.
Yeah.
People are working remote, people are moving a lot right now. So I think.
Very much under the agreement with Jake, I, I think it's very realistic, uh, thought process that an interim will be, you know, the route will go. But again, in signing any of these contracts, as long as we know we're not signing another con, not contract, there's no harm in starting the search now and seeing, seeing what's available and then pausing the search and going back.
That's when we get a sense and idea of, you know, what are we looking at? What does the community want? What are, you know, what direction we go? That, that's not lost work.
Well, that would be the question though, because you mentioned this. If we sign a contract with the company, the group, we committed to X amount of dollars, but we stopped the process and then begin again, does that increase the cost or is it one?
All positive. All three of them. Yeah. What they would do is they would, uh, classify the searches suspended. And then, um, a suspended search, you can go and repost when you go to pick it up. Um, you can continue to keep the same candidate pool that already indicated interest. They can be carried forward when the search gets picked back up. But yeah, no, they're, not, not, none of these proposals would have the district on the hook for an additional contract. If you needed to suspend the search, go the interim route and then come back and pick it up in January um, to get it posted and, and then go through a full process in January 2022.
I think a lot of it's going to be up to us. One business meeting a month isn't going to work here. We're going to have special meetings and if we stay on it, when I read a bunch of them, they're going to want to interview us. We have to find in our schedules times to be able to get those interviews. That's what's going to drive the whole thing. All we've got to do is slow up any of that. And then I, I would leave it to, for me, I would like to get somebody going and have somebody that's a professional tell us it's time to look at doing through. I'm probably not going to decide that myself. I would do that based upon somebody that knows more about it. But I think it's going to be a dedication on our part. And I think we all need to be thinking about the other committees and possibly members of other committees. And I don't know who could collect that data. Maybe you could, if we've got ideas at the committees, I think we may as well start thinking about it. If you have a citizens committee, um, maybe the, we can decide on, on who we would get from the educational staff. But maybe we could, you could talk to our administrators and just, yeah, see if they might have suggestions. And we do our best, but kind of, we know what's coming. And then try and expedite it. It may not seem quite so rushed, but I believe they will tell us. For me, when I looked at Exec Connect and I got a read about a guy that's from Illinois. For me, when I looked at the Exec Connect and I got a read about a guy that's from Illinois, that was a big turn off. I just had to keep on going, because when I got into the rest of their sheets, the two people that are gonna be watching over this project are both Minnesota. We're not gonna have somebody traveling back and forth and all of that kind of stuff.
Well, let me ask you, like, because somebody's from Illinois, why would that not make, like, we're putting assumptions on there that then we need a candidate that's fitting into our box versus, I want somebody who's qualified, who can do the position, you know, you know what I mean, like?
For me, it's to make sure who's helping us drive this thing is close by.
Okay.
Where they come up with the candidates.
There wouldn't be the. That's being available for us.
Okay. Thank you. That helped, thank you. I was like, what does that have to do with it?
Me, I'd like to make a motion that we hire Exec Connect.
I have a motion from Bruce to hire Exec Connect. But I have a second.
I'll second.
A second. Is there further discussion? We still have to.
Time for further.
Time to have further discussion now.
I guess I was kind of stuck between School Exec and Big River also. I just, longevity of the groups that have been working together made an impact on me, plus Minnesota School Board Association, Minnesota, kind of made me think that maybe that's where they would be gathering their flow from. That may be wrong, but I I guess I kind of focused on the other two also. So I'm good with Exec Connect also.
Matt, you have the second, correct?
I like to that if if we do our work on the front part, saying here are the requirements, here's what we need, that matrix is built and it's solid, that they can help filter out and so that we're not looking through 50 candidates that the experts are the ones truly looking at, put in against the, because if we've agreed on the matrix, then you're already bringing forward your best candidates. Then we're not, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna look through 50 candidates.
I'm I'm almost positive that all board members are gonna get all, all the candidates.
But I think Exec Connect said they would bring forward the recommendation of like seven.
They will. They absolutely will, but you guys will see.
Yes, you'll see it all, correct, but we're not the ones sitting down and doing this together of all these candidates. And I did like that, like, they're the experts, they're gonna know.
I I just have one question though. School Exec deals strictly with schools? Whereas Big River does.
Yeah, Big River, he does, he does, he does schools, he works with private industry, he works with other government agencies.
Offbeat, so.
Yeah, I mean, he's all, he he works with a wide variety of.
The advantage of that would be that we're again, are we saying is one of the, this is a required qualification, would it have to be prior superintendent experience? Potentially, there are people from other industries, higher ed or whatever, that could come in, so.
Did it have a competitive license and?
You know, would Big River have more access to different types? I don't know that, but it's just something that it's.
And sometimes superintendents go into the consulting industry and then they get their license and they do whatever. So that's, I think that's actually fairly common, isn't it, that they go to the private sector and then they go back and all it and. So I mean, that's that's kind of the field that he has too, that he can kind of draw from different areas. But I mean, the other one's fine too.
What do you, I mean, do you wanna provide any feedback on?
I could certainly offer my opinion. Yeah, I think the discussion is is on point. I I do believe, you know, nothing against MSBA, I think they they are doing good work. They are new at it and they're, they do not have the the depth of experience that the other two have. I don't think the board can go wrong with either either one, either Big River or School Exec Connect. I I really think either one will do quality work.
I'd like to add one more thing. We just got done talking about a strategic plan. That was an organization of all of our board thoughts, of directions that we think we should go, including the administration, including everybody that Matt has met with. It's not like we're entering this without knowing what direction we wanna go. And I think when we start talking about putting this all together, in a moment, if they call for my interview, I'm gonna pull up the sheet and look at it, because all my thoughts and everybody will have their own thoughts, because we were going different directions on the, are right there and I think it will solidify. It's not that we're heading into this with no organization, no direction. That plan, the strategic plan, is probably a pretty good guide and it's absolutely current at the moment. And I might be reading that wrong, but I, there's parts of this I think that are going to be a lot faster just because of our organization that's taking place here.
Call the question.
Yeah, any further, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say no. Carrie. Item D, preliminary 21, 22.
A question, so now that that, what's the next step for that?
So so let's talk about next step before we have to move on. Can people possibly commit? Can we actually just set a special meeting for Monday evening?
Yep.
I have no idea if Monday evening will work for them, but I think it would be best if we could just say we have time available Monday evening.
Do it.
Does that sound like that?
That's a really good idea, because that's what's gonna drive this whole thing and it'll.
Are we?
And if one is other one.
Are we all in agreeance too? I mean, are we okay with them being remote? If they need to be remote from a meeting, that's, just getting there and talking to them one way or another?
I assume most of it would be remote.
At least to start, you know, with as fast as we're gonna go through this, I can only assume.
Are we talking the third?
Yep, the third. Do you want to do six o'clock or do you want?
Now, what's the best time for everybody? You know, we're looking at a series of meetings and there's certain people in here that probably have things that may go a little later. Do we need to make it at seven or what's the best time for everybody? Six o'clock, okay, or?
Six o'clock's okay for me. Monday's a little tough at six sometimes, so seven would be a little bit better or even six thirty if that matters.
We want everybody to be somewhat content, so you can collect your thoughts and not be racing in.
Correct. Mine is just childcare, she's, I'll be home, but my wife won't be, so we gotta figure out kids for that hour while she's, or half hour, whatever, while she's gone.
She can give him seven, I mean, give you some grace period there.
Yeah, if everybody's looking at seven o'clock.
I'm fine with any time.
Maybe your schedule's really tight too.
Monday, that will work for me. I mean, fortunately, I'm still working from home, so I'm more, I'm still not gonna rush back from St. Ben's.
Okay, that's all, Rick, I'm assuming you're okay. Seven o'clock, Monday night.
Seven o'clock, Monday evening, in this room.
This room.
Okay.
And then actually, on that note too, should we, is there any consideration, or should there have been any consideration regarding language in the contract? Or are we pretty confident that?
Well, so that was gonna be my my next thought is, do, does the board want me to contact School Exec Connect tomorrow and and talk with them about this? Or?
Want me to take care of that?
Does Thomas want, I, you guys tell me how you want.
I think if you would.
Okay.
Again, board members, they'll have other things to do. We're just coordinating a meeting together. And we've decided we're gonna take their deal.
Okay.
Thomas, can you be involved if there's a contract thing?
Certainly can be involved in any contract and the things and then, and on that note too, if you don't mind keeping me copied on any, you know, communication that I can just, if I need to take up, pick up from any point in time, I don't have to start over.
Yep.
Yep, and if you can get us rolling, I think they will start, once they get our first meeting, they will tend to run this part of it.
Yep. And then just moving forward with this, I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page. I do think I am, I am willing to help and assist in whatever manner the board would like, but it is also appropriate for me to step back and step away. And you guys are the ones that really need to to run this. So depending on how School Exec Connect schedules their first meeting, there's a very real likelihood that I will not be part of the Monday, May 3rd meeting at seven o'clock PM.
Yep.
Okay?
Would you recommend, or would they recommend, if there's someone else from the admin team?
That, and that's what, I would leave that up to them. But I just, I have a 95% suspicion that I will not be part of that Monday evening meeting.
And I, professionally, I completely agree with that and I don't feel that you should necessarily be here for. I appreciate you helping with getting the ball rolling on some communication, but I also appreciate you not being here.
Yes.
Not to put it the wrong way, but.
No mistake, it's Thomas.
Delicately worded.
In that, in your communication to them or whomever's asking, like, should we ask at that time, is there anyone else that should be involved on that third meeting? So we're not like, oh, should I have this person?
So what I'm gonna do tomorrow is I'm gonna call all three of these. I'll let Bruce know that we're going a different direction. I'll let MSBA know that. And then I'm gonna call School Exec Connect and talk with them. I want to know what the first kickoff meeting looks like. If they have a sample agenda, I would ask them to share that with me. And then I will ask them what exactly they expect for my role to be. I'm assuming that the answer's gonna be you don't have a role. And then if there are others that they want involved, whether that is somebody from the admin team or if they just wanna start with the board. So that's the kind of the the overall conversation I wanna have with them tomorrow. And then from there, realistically, it will probably be turned over in Thomas's court is is how I see it working.
Okay, so we got open meeting last.
Yep.
And we have to announce three days, so when we get there, that's something that may come through you.
Absolutely.
Because we've gotta make sure it's posted and all of that, because we don't want any, we don't wanna make any mistakes.
And both Miranda and I will will.
Miranda can probably handle that. And Thomas, you can drive that? Because it's a big deal. We don't wanna miss anything.
And School Exec Connect, they will know exactly what they need to do for open media law too, so they may even be in contact with Miranda or whatever. But yeah, we'll assist in every way we can with that. Okay?
Good.
Okay, so Monday, May 3rd, 7:00 PM. All right. Now let's go on to item D.
All right, now item D, preliminary 21, 22, school calendar.
So just a couple of things I just want to mention on the school calendar. This has had a lot of conversation this spring. Typically, this is a March activity for the board. It is coming here a month late. We are gonna be looking at doing some things differently next year. There's been a lot of conversation at the secondary building about parent-teacher conferences. And the reality is, I think, both fall and spring conferences, attendance and and engagement with parent-teacher conferences in this building, along with a lot of secondary buildings, just is not very good. So one thing that that faculty and Mr. Orlin would like to try is rather than having a secondary parent-teacher conference evening or day, to have a fall communication window and a spring communication window. And so those are denoted on here, so for instance, like October 11th through October 30th are, would be the fall communication window with the goal and expectation that all teachers will reach out to all families within that three-week window. Again, are there some families that might choose to come in and have a traditional parent-teacher conference? Absolutely. And that's perfectly okay. But at the same time, I think there's lots of different ways that 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 communication can happen. Elementary school parent-teacher conferences are going quite well. I mean, I think they have 98 or 97% attendance rate. They pretty much see all the families and it really seems to be working. So I don't necessarily know why we would make modifications to it. The only thing then that in brainstorming this that we came up with is, okay, so if we're not gonna have parent-teacher conferences in the fall of the secondary, we're gonna have this communication window, what are we gonna do on that day that elementary school has parent-teacher conferences? Because there's a lot of older students that are needing to stay home with younger siblings until mom or dad come home and grab the kids to go to conferences or something. So the thought is those elementary parent-teacher conference days would be distance learning, remote learning, or e-learning days for secondary students. So that is the the major difference in this calendar. There are 170 student contact days for secondary students. There's 168 student contact days for elementary students. And then how conferences would be delivered will look different next year than I think they have in this district for for several years. Nobody knows if this will work. It certainly can't be any lower participation than what we currently have. So in my mind, it's worth a try.
I think it's a great idea.
And let's see how it goes. But just know, you could be sitting in these same chairs next year and the secondary might be coming with a different option or something different or, you know. But that, go ahead.
I can say, me as a, you know, parent in the future high school, and Maggie, you can relate as as a parent of a high school student, but I would rather I would be contacted from all my students' teachers in that 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 means over that time period and say, here's, you know, the goods, the bad, and this is, you know, what I see. And I can take that and say, well, you know, I wanna talk to you and see how that's going or, no, they absolutely love that class. I don't really need to, I appreciate the communication and I can go out if I like, but you know, where is there a class where I would wanna maybe relate into a little more? And maybe there's parents that wouldn't mind relating into it, but they just don't know how or don't wanna take that opportunity to just blindly come in and see what they're gonna come into. An elementary school parent, I love going in, talking to the teachers and seeing how my students doing and how the class is doing, what their career's gonna be like. So but in the secondary, I I kinda feel like they're a little bit more of that stage where, you know, do I need to come in blindly to every teacher and figure this out or, you know, so.
Right, I think there's a big shift, like, you know, you have, well, you probably have less teachers, right, in elementary schools, so they understand, you know, your student maybe a little bit better. But then there is, it seems like the shift of, then you would only come in if there's an issue. And I would like to see that different, that you're not coming in only because there's an issue in the secondary, you know, space that you're just checking on the well-being of your child, whether it's good or bad, and that the teacher can share the good news too, but I mean, I wonder why parents, because we have such high participation, it seems odd to see that just drop off. So I wonder if it's.
And it's not a a unique issue at Paine's Valley.
I would.
Right, it's just the way.
High schools across the state, across the country struggle with that continued engagement in parent-teacher conferences.
I would say for myself, this is this one notion or sense that I get. I feel like there's a level of uncomfortability for a parent in a secondary school as compared to the elementary school. When you go to an elementary school from kindergarten on up, you're walking your kid into that school, you're getting comfortable with that school building. There is only one teacher you're comfortable with, hitting with one teacher. You come into the secondary school, and I know a lot of people that live in this community for many, many, many years, and they've never set foot in the high school or secondary building at all, regardless of the age their children are. Someone doesn't even know where it's at. And their kids, they're gonna send their kids off to here, well, it's blindly, like, we'll drop them off at the door, because you can't walk them in and talk to their teacher on the first day of school. So everything about coming to a secondary school is almost uncomfortable for for parents at that point in time, unless their kid's really active in arts or athletics. But even then, that's that football field, baseball field, not even coming into the building again. So there's just this, this this level of, you know.
This is, this is maybe, maybe five, six, even potentially even seven years ago now. I had sent a message out in a statewide principal lister, asking them if there are people out there experiencing success with senior high and middle school parent-teacher conferences. And I was astounded at the number of responses I got back were, no. But will you send me any ideas that you get in the mail? Well, literally, I think I got four ideas out of probably 70, 80 responses. So I think it's just important, I'm I'm really enthused that our our teachers are brainstorming something different. And is this, is there anything that we can say this is what's gonna work? No, but we can't get any worse results than what we got right now.
Well, it provides more space and time for contacts. I think even just by accident, I thought conferences were held this year, which they weren't. Being at home, but if you have a teacher, and I was like, this is really great, because there also are a lot of parents who are single-family homes or they're working, it is difficult to get into conferences. So having that ability where you have a three-week schedule, like, can we schedule five minutes over lunch? It maybe gives more flexibility and then that parent isn't coming into the school.
Yeah, yeah, or they are, they're coming in with a purpose. I'm coming in to see the math teacher, because I know my my kids struggle with math, but they wouldn't have come in to find that out otherwise. They look at their report card maybe, but they're not gonna actually communicate with a teacher what's going on. If they can get that communication ahead of time and say, oh, I can. oh, I can come in and meet with you, that kind of gives them a little bit more of a a purpose to come in instead of just a a blind entrance to a building that they're not comfortable with.
Right.
I think it might be a generational thing too.
I think back to when my kids were at school, I think there, we'd have the conference here and there were a lot of parents that came. Um, but I think people are busier and and, you know, I don't know what the reasons are. But I think the generation has gotten to be more mature than it was.
Right.
It was a social thing, but twenty five years ago.
I came for the cookies.
Well, there's no cookies.
Solved the problem. But I love it. I'm glad that they're thinking of new flexible ways to engage parents or families, I should say.
And we've had a really good conversation about, you know, does the, do the elementary and secondary schools always have to do the same thing? And so it was just good conversation, and I'm I'm glad that they're willing to try something. Um, this calendar will serve as a preliminary calendar. You can see I've identified commencement on June fifth. Uh, the board will formally select commencement as part of their organizational meeting. That is something you guys, uh, will do, uh, in July. But just know that on this, um, preliminary calendar, that is the the, um, the date that has been identified.
I have a question regards to West Central Ed. How does this kind of fall in line with, I mean, not that we have to, obviously, they deal with these calendar issues, but I'm just curious how this is working with their calendar.
It's gonna get, it's gonna be similar.
Okay.
Um, it it's not gonna be spot on. The other thing that is happening here is, um, we are adding, um, teacher in-service days. And the reason that we're doing that, when we go back to that strategic plan document, was that letters literacy professional development. That is actually a two-year commitment. And, uh, we are gonna be moving forward with teachers in K through eight, going through this this letters, um, training. And it's gonna kind of become the common, um, jargon that that is gonna be implemented in in all of our classrooms when it comes to particularly reading. They require for this two-year commitment, what they would like is, um, there's eight modules that people go through over two years. And, um, they like after each P D session, which lasts anywhere from an hour and a half to two and a half hours, they like to have, um, ten to twenty instructional days. Where teachers can actually take what they just learned in P D and implement it, collect student data to bring it back to the next, um, training session. So that's the other thing that is driving this calendar. So you will see that there is just about an in-service day every month. And the reason for that is to accommodate this professional development piece that's gonna be going on with letters training, so that we have, um, those those built into the calendar.
Another question about the calendar, sorry, so many calendar questions. Um, so there's no e-learning days, snow days type thing. Is the expectation moving forward? There's bad weather, it would just automatically be, uh, e-learning day? We don't need to build in those days anymore, or are students still gonna have a day or two where we literally won't have learning on a true snow day?
If it were, if it were my decision, the first snow day would be a traditional snow day where everybody goes outside and has fun and enjoys the snow.
That's kind of what I'm asking, like, is that gone?
No, I hope it's not gone, maybe. Um, I I really hope that that's a direction people can still go. Um, there are multiple bills in the legislature, something's gonna get in the the final omnibus bill that is going to give local school districts the ability to do e-learning, or they're just gonna recall in distance learning days.
Right.
Um, whenever there's an emergency, that emergency could be weather. You could have a utility issue, you could have anything.
Right.
A district is gonna have the flexibility to just call a distance learning day. But I really hope that we still have a snow day where people just go outside and play in the snow.
Because weren't they usually built into the calendar, like, extra days, like, that you would build them? Okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
So. Okay.
I'll make a motion, we approve the preliminary twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school calendar as presented.
I have a motion from Bruce.
I will second.
And Maggie's second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Carrie. Upcoming meetings, we've got, uh, West Central Ed.
So we have a host of things. Can I just kind of run through these?
You certainly may.
Um, so May fourth is West Central Ed, um, my understanding, my notes said virtual, I I believe that's still gonna be virtual, I thought. Um, I thought Lori was having a surgery or something, sorry.
I think so.
Pretty sure it's virtual. Uh, May eleventh will be our work and learn. Please make sure you note the time, one thirty. Students will be back in May. Um, and that will probably be a pretty lengthy work session. We're gonna be talking more about operating referendum, um, we're gonna talk about facility, uh, pieces. And we're gonna have the coffee shop, um, students here, so just know that that one might be a little longer than than some of the others. Negotiations, I have first negotiation meeting scheduled. So if you want, just check your negotiation, um, group assignment. Uh, Thursday, May thirteenth, our food service will be at four P M, and that'll be followed right by custodians at five P M. On the fourteenth, we have the district tech committee, that'll be seven thirty in the morning, that will be in here or it's, um, virtual. You can participate either way, Thomas. And then on the nineteenth, we're gonna have our first teacher negotiation meeting, and that'll be at five P M in in this space. And then at the end of the month, we have our regular business meeting at six P M. The only negotiation meeting I don't have set up yet is paraprofessionals. And I'm anticipating here in the next week, I'll have a a date confirmed with them. As soon as I I do that, I will get it on the calendar and and get calendar invites out to those that are gonna be on that paraprofessional group.
What's the negotiation that our community means will, will Miranda send us meeting requests, or should we go in and put them all in our calendar?
Nope, so these are gonna go on that school board calendar and we'll invite, like, for quote service negotiation, we'll go and invite that party.
Perfect.
To that meeting, um, so in the next couple of days, look for some invites coming in your calendar.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, and then just a reminder, we also scheduled a May third meeting at seven P M, um, as well, and that'll be in this room.
Um, everybody on the calendar business. Uh, before we adjourn, I just have a question. So obviously, we have that school shooting, so the, um, we don't have a Kim Rice in here, unfortunately, to help us with that. It would be great if we did. So just our security measures at our school, what what's that, just I just thought it'd be a good refresher, because because I don't think us during the board, have we been, had any security discussions since we've been on here? Uh, what, so let's put that scenario if it happens here. What are the steps? How does that go? Just for my safety, mine, and probably for the people that might be watching, so that they know we have a really good plan in place, uh, for our kids.
Yeah, I mean, so first of all, I think it's important to remember, um, we have a very strong, um, school resource officer contract. Uh, we have two resource officers, they are, uh, here, um, four or five days a week. And they're they're either going to be at least a half a day, they're either at the elementary school or they're here. Um, there's, I would say both of the resource officers, all the students know them and and stuff, and I think both resource officers have very good relationships with kids, so that's point number one. Um, second of all, whenever there would be any sort of a, um, incident like that, and it wouldn't need to rise to the level of a school shooting, um, but our buildings would be in lockdown, is is what would happen. And so essentially, what that would mean is that absolutely, as it is, this entire building would go into lockdown. Teachers would then take whoever it is that they are supposed to have with them. And once they're in lockdown, they're taking attendance, and they're going through the process to figure out, is everybody accounted for? Or am I, am I supposed to have students that I don't have, because maybe they went to use the restroom and then a lockdown got called? Um, or was it, was a lockdown called and was somebody in the hallway and I just said, get in my room and and our doors went shut? So everybody's taking into account, who do I have? Is it everybody I'm supposed to have or not? And then there's protocol in place for where they're supposed to be, what they're supposed to do in that classroom once things are are locked down. Once there is some level of an all clear, which would be partnered with law enforcement. I mean, if we get to that situation here, yes, Payne's Well P D is gonna be involved, but I will guarantee you, the county, um, sheriff department will be here and state troopers will be here as well. But ultimately, once that that's that situation is, we're in lockdown, law enforcement is gonna be the one who's gonna determine when that threat is mitigated and when lockdown can end. When lockdown ends, then teachers are putting out a communication card out under their door to let everybody know whether um, everything's A okay and we're all accounted for, we're all good in this room, or there's an issue and we need, um, some some, uh, assistance. And then those that need assistance, those are the ones that are priority ranked to get, um, cleared out first. And once those are all taken care of, then we will go in and be able to clear out all of, um, the other rooms. We have two evacuation sites, so, um, if we needed to evacuate, we would either be evacuating to the Lutheran church or the Catholic church. Um, most likely, in a situation where it would be a lockdown, let's just say the scenario like what happened, um, we probably would not use an evacuation site, but we would set up a entrance that would be a a single pickup, um, location where where we would, uh, um, have parents come over and and sign kids out and and such. Um, so that is in a nutshell.
Sure.
What it would include, um, but I just, I can't stress enough, the thing that we have that is most valuable is we have a very, very good relationship with our resource officers, and that's. Tony and Jerome are they're they're fabulous, and that that to me is is the biggest thing we have going is is those two.
And I think that's good for our community, know that we really have that positive relationship that helps us out. Heck, I remember they started doing quota drills when I was in school, and it was scary, it's terrifying, we have to do it, and it's sad that we as a district have to prepare for that awful possibility, but, uh, I think that our residents can find comfort that we've got a really good relationship with our law enforcement department and great resource officers, so that's something I think we can take some comfort in.
That's also how things have changed. We didn't have those lives at school. We had nuclear war.
Yeah, it's sitting there, what is that? Kind of like, sir.
With that, look for a motion to adjourn.
I move the board to adjourn.
Motion from Jake.
I'll second.
Second from Cheryl. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Carrie.